This conference will now be recorded.
So, of course, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we will call the Board to order at 6:02 PM September 12th. There is a little bit of confusion, but the meeting was posted for 6:00 PM. We had Berkshire County Retirement was supposed to be in at 6:00 PM. They canceled yesterday. So, we don't have much on the agenda until 6:30 PM. Members of the eight-town Regional School District Planning Board, or leadership of that organization is going to give a presentation and answer questions from the board and from members of the public. So, because we announced that for 6:30, we're gonna hold off until then for that.
Do we have any unanticipated?
We do have one unanticipated business I'm aware of. But I need to figure out what it is because it only came up today.
The only other one is that she asked me today what color I thought we should paint the trim of, whether we should stick with the cream, change the trim color, which led to a very amusing conversation and the clarity that no two people had the same suggestion.
On town hall or?
Town hall, the trim on town hall.
Remember the library paint color discussion?
Don't start that.
I'll recuse myself.
I love the orange. I was in that camp. I think it looks great.
You change yourself from a lot of stuff.
I think that might have been just
Yeah, oh, steam.
You can just say you were colorblind, so it doesn't matter to you.
I am.
You are? Oh, that's a good reason to
When I do the colorblind test, I get, I fail certain ones.
Do you know which?
But then I can actually say purple, blue, green, but blue, purple.
You can't have colorblind, yeah. My father was right here, which means I can.
My ex was. Did someone said to me?
So, one of the things, you may remember that we just appointed an ADA coordinator for the
Yesterday.
For a grant. It sounds like part of what needs to happen.
Thank you. I didn't get it, but I don't want to get the thank you.
We need to acknowledge we have less, fewer than 50 employees.
We acknowledge, we have fewer employees.
Fifty, four times with fifty employees, period.
I think fifty employees, period. Melissa, if you're on, maybe you could elucidate if there's anything else that we need to do as far as accessibility grant and the ADA coordinator and fifty employees.
Let's see, they just need to know if we have less than fifty employees, have an ADA coordinator, if we want to have BRPC apply for this grant for us, which I'm trying to find details of it.
We do have fewer than fifty, I think.
Who did we appoint?
Uh, it's Carlson, Robert Carlson.
Very nice. What, do we know our employee count? Melissa?
Well, full-time, we're definitely less than fifty. If you count all the firemen, we probably are over fifty.
Do we know what they count as an employee?
He has not answered that question. Right, I'm trying to find the email.
So, for any people who just showed up online and in person, there was a little bit of confusion, but the Regional School District Planning Board discussion is going to begin at 6:30 PM.
We apologize for any confusion. There was originally supposed to be a 6:00 PM meeting with the retirement representative of retirement plan, but they canceled last minute and we were not able to, because of timing, change the posted meeting. So, we're just filling time for the half hour.
Was that the only item then?
So, we basically don't know what they count as employees, so it's difficult to answer that?
Yeah, because I think like Melissa said, if it's part of employees, we're probably close, if not over.
So, it's a planning grant for updating, creating a self-evaluation and/or transition plan under the ADA Title II. Yeah, let's see.
I mean, the question is if we're in favor of applying for the grant. I'm in favor of it.
Yes, that's the question.
Yeah, I think we're all in favor of it.
That's, everyone agrees that we should apply for the grant.
I mean, if we're excluded because they, of the way they count employees that were over fifty, then obviously that's a problem. But absent that, it would be great to apply for it.
I'll check with Seth tomorrow and when I confirm that you want to apply.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't know, like
But are, we're not repainting the whole building, right?
No.
So, should we just go with the
Go with the same trim that exists? Like, if we were planning ahead, would we take it? If we were going from statue, I would be happy with a different color. I think it's very blah, but I don't know if it's worth the extra expense to paint all. There's a lot of trim out there. You don't notice it because it's such a similar color that There's a lot of trim, yeah. And there's the balcony. I guess that could be the color still.
I was gonna say, do we want to match the new colors?
I thought about this story, but it's a very gray.
I'm joking. I was joking.
I always think it'd be nice that, like, the colors that were floating were like hunter green, black,
I didn't go with that.
Like a dark navy, blue, something that had a lot of contrast, but
What are the colors of our logo?
I was just wondering that.
Actually, we did on the library shirt, we mirrored them.
Monterey likes the way it's like a dark green, right?
I don't know what the television
Oh, right, he's a television.
You know, actually, one thing is if there are any comments and questions from the public that are unrelated to this school discussion, not that this school, this, not that you're having some questions related to school, but it would probably make sense to do so after the presentation and when the representatives are here.
It's about the school thing, but not about it. Do we have a briefing before the special town meeting on this subject? Or is that something we want to, I mean, we're gonna hear from them tonight and understand it, but I think the select board and maybe the finance committee, which is planning to do some analysis, should think about if, like, we held the budget briefing, do we want to hold, do we want to hold an informational meeting before the town meeting, we have to bring it through a vote? It's a town question, not a them question.
I mean, I think it would certainly make sense, especially once there is a final proposal.
We're happy to work with you on it.
I got your financial spreadsheets from Jake, you know, because that whole interest, he said in the meeting would be three and a quarter. And then he ran it at, I want to say six point five, but he sent me this spreadsheet. I can send it to
Please, me and Roger.
So, it has all the background information. Go to
Perfect.
worksheet one and you'll see what it looks like.
What, what was the rate we just bought and we initiated the
I think it was around five percent, wasn't it?
No, I thought it was lower than that.
And Stefan's telling me, if you look at it, it would be a bond.
Probably it's a municipal issue one, which goes at a different rate.
I forgot.
Maybe, I don't remember either. Melissa, what was the loan rate that we just did for the combined, like, truck, et cetera? Do you remember?
I don't. Let me see if I have it in my email.
There's, I just did a Google search on it, it was like four and four, and he said three and four. And then he ran the model at six and a half, which was twice as much.
Oh, I was saying eighteen twenty, the number.
You got very different rates. As we were, my, when I was living around, and five municipal bond, we also made our time, I don't know. And the municipal loan rate, so it was like three and a half. So, I don't know what a bond and a loan is or what the rules are, but that's a strike each. Three and a quarter and over five, it's very different.
But it gives you a sense of the numbers, so
I know, but I think it's important to realize those two aren't the same, but I don't know which one would apply.
I know, but
Because
And you're a few years old.
True, but if you're, if one is half the other, they're both uncertain, but that's a big difference.
Well, it gives you the sense.
At least brackets.
It's kind of about the QV.
He wrote that email that he sent
That's why I told him eighteen twenty about something like her.
There's a lot of work
Hundred million or something. Like eighteen twenty, you know what I mean?
You know, he did say, like you know, they didn't use the model of the construction years.
Oh, Gary might know, because he's on the Gav.
Whatever they do, they prove.
Did you, did you see any estimates of the school size here?
He sent me, he sent me, I don't remember what the email sent, but I went on that mass, I'm sure it's a state thing.
Well, last year it was
And he told me.
It was six point seven, I believe.
Because I don't want to scare the email yesterday morning. It was like seven hundred and fifty dollars per square foot.
But do you know how the
Why not?
He gave me a
Yeah, I don't know.
I'll send it to you guys.
Because I know that it depends on how the kids, they side with, et cetera. But I still would not like to for, like, low, high for the square foot, because I
Why does everyone have so much money?
I know. You're asking a lot of people.
Because it ain't me.
If I knew, now they got it. I bet it.
So, if, in a hundred and ten million, it'd be about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and forty seven thousand.
So, I asked him, you know, as a safe on, he confirmed it's a percentage, and it is a percentage of itself that goes up. They still cover that by
Yeah, that's what I got when I was reading this up again today, just to refresh my memory. But I was just trying to figure out why, what they were using as a sort of benchmark for how big the building was.
Well, here's what it was. I got a square footage. You can read my full memo here. Estimates are established. MSBA figures about two hundred and fourteen to two hundred and twenty-five. Our low estimates is a hundred and ten thousand square feet, a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet. And then I estimate about the square cost per square foot was seven hundred and eighty-six.
So, what is it? Mill rate is another term, I think.
Seven eighty-six.
Per thousand, that's why I said
Thousand dollars.
Mill meaning three. Yeah, slash that to the That's not actually real.
You know, you go on that
I was looking up super fast. I remember you were about eighteen
Excluding like all these
Right.
Thirty-five thousand. It's the month when you're working. The annual work is fifty-two thousand thirty-five, it's eighteen twenty.
But I was trying to do, go into a search where there's work and stuff like that. And here, here was funny, really, of course.
Doesn't seem to be building coming down.
They're not, they're not, they're not
Wait, what was the rate?
Two and got the professional way. I mean, I think we've got some of the
Four.
The cost here, it's like
Oh, you can test this in kind and you can get it now, you can want to. I just wasn't getting it. No, I understand this, yeah.
Someone's going through the spreadsheet, it could be a big Because it's incredible what you see. It's, you know, they're quite
Do you want to do more?
Or it's a G, I mean, that's a bit of a specialize. I mean, you know, but they, they use a variety of I know kind of, he's electrical.
What you do for senior? I know, I don't
They spend a hundred thousand dollars
Well, that's what I'm asking again. No, because I'm not, I don't just Yeah, I mean, that's
You got to, you know, it's not like, you know, you gotta, have to have a few people pay for it, you know, it's just
The security thing is getting a little different because I don't think it's actually
If I had to, I would, I mean, like I
Our perception of child deception is more common. In fact, it's not more common at all. It's just more where it's
It's not, or it's government, you know, that Everything was contracted.
So, I, I suspect the whole security.
You were government? Yeah.
I think it's possible.
No, but anybody that does that runs the You know what you're looking for. Now that's something I'm thinking of, you're good at. Even in two words, you figure it out.
Yeah. How, how many schools have, I mean, this is most college, because those are the ones I know best. That have crossed a fortune and never returned to Like, I don't know what it is about the, I don't know if the architect building, but like it's shocking, how, and, and some of the
Like, I love the sentence, what I liked at first, but like
Can, you know, I might not be, but if I'm building a high that family system
Yeah, it's like phase three, what's in
I have a cinder block closed, all of the things that I might have to repair. Which, in fact, might be hell. Right, but that, that's just like a basic thing.
Phase three.
I, I don't know. Someone made the decision to do it, and I don't know what's
And you don't, you don't
I already had, I felt several
You're sealed, dude.
Well, I had a really good to the, at the first, I'm buying a piece of concrete, I had it, okay, my, thirty thousand, it's pretty
So, it's not just the price, it's the wraparound, what you're doing.
I believe it. And sometimes you don't find out the password, at some point, right? And then you find out because
Well, I don't know.
And like, all of the problems they run into with that
No, but even in R C, you don't have to go with the low, you can qualify
One is architectural, it works for designing.
So, there are thieves, you can qualify, you can tie into what they said, right?
You said they'll go on, watch yourself
Yeah. Well, because It's weird, you're I understand that, you know
So, you'll have a better
Yes, we're pretty close. But, yeah.
There's a good thing about it, they put up this deal.
So, that, so that's your sole thing? And did you do other They're all like
They're, they're Really, just because They told me, they just don't, don't do this, and they tell us
That's nice.
You know, build the cinder block, and build the steel, and take you seventy, eighty, ninety, here. It's just a good day, get everyone more, the more, the later you build. The building still stands, you know.
So, you should, but you don't want to do more damage, et cetera.
What were they using? Oh, beauty.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Susan?
Yeah.
The last interest rate was four point three eight percent.
Okay, that'd be pretty funny.
Thank you.
How many people do they ever use it?
Oh, we used it.
And then it was
Two thousand.
And it's every
Okay. So, who's the guy? But just the business has changed, so they, they didn't need any
Oh, I should come to about the wood, you know, like, that's the finest, I have a lot of interest.
I love Well, I
Yeah.
Been doing online copies, yeah, she said you don't want to
Yeah, it's really interesting, you know, all this weird pace where they just make since when I left All the papers that we made, it's
Yeah, no, yeah. Oh, that's
We, at our best, here
Since I told it, oh my gosh.
Here it is.
Nothing happened.
That's true.
That would be funny.
Because This is a scripture.
I
Yeah, that's
And not on purpose. No, I had a, you know, I don't know.
They want to
We're gonna fight, yeah. For the fall, you do it right.
We have, you know, like I know. I know. We have, you know, it has a period.
One percent, there's on the board.
We never answered the
I'm frightened. And, yeah, yeah.
You say, oh, sure. You know, you might
You have math or something. Where did you go? Where did you go? So, I forget. My mom taught me that one to you. I bet you they know, because my mother was a special ed teacher. I bet you they're the same age. How old was you?
Elaine? She's seventy-seven, seventy-eight.
So, my mother's eighty-six. No, I'm sure they know, so what year, did, which did she teach you? So, my mother was in Davelon, she was like, they had a special ed, but she was a, she was a, yeah, reading line teacher. I'm sure they know each other. Yeah, she used to have, of all her friends, I only remember one named Barry, and they have a car that's
I'll mention
I can't remember. We think And so, and who would be
I'm sending you, I don't know if I'm not attached. Did you get the attachment where there's the different interest rates?
Right, I'm looking for, all right, but a lot of, I mean, there's a
Just the chat. I'll send you the Just so you can, wait, you can read my column on my estimate, that was seven year, that I do have.
Yeah, yeah, there's another one, that he writes in there.
You guys, where did you go? Oh, you live, well, my, my sister's moving here.
Right here.
Well, like we said, that, Beer Town Road is definitely named. Some guy, I was just thinking, why, he's like, look what I just saw, my daughter's hanging out. It's called, it shouldn't be there. I'm like, oh, it's in Beer Town Road, that's not being Oh, so you lived in, oh, so, yeah, so, oh, you passed my, oh, my children. So, I grew up right off Broadway, on, you know, North Broadway.
It's a busy area.
I was
By the Tresson, by the Tresson?
No, I was on the wrong side of the track, we were almost, right, like, on the back of the F P State Park. You know, like, what a high school was.
We didn't want to nail it here, but
You're thinking of the There was, you, you know, not far enough, so I really got
With the blessing thing, you know, it's short, but no bad, and then it's like
Well, there's in there scenario
That between, like, the
Scenario
Where the substance people, the boundary after him. You know, I mean, that was like that where I grew up, it's like, it's like, and more times, it was Broadway.
You can start spending money, but you just take them over there and play you know, your sports team.
Where do your kids go to school?
You know, I just, I don't know.
It's not clear what would happen to the kids during their build phase. For the
I bet you, she, she worked in, yeah, she worked in that one, so, so who did you work for?
But the first
So, I don't know those cases.
So, my president has a document, you know, it's That's what they
Have plenty of free time.
Oh, you still, you're doing car
Oh, too good, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not So You wrote the foreword. It's all
I know. And, and
So, I kind of
On the upside also.
And that one did, it was everything, school design, transition, everything.
What I had done I mean, I guess, like, I got my church Now, a couple
Yeah, but we would all, we would all have some everything
That's not even funny.
But that committee would be another People don't know The check will get you That six out of the left
But that
I think it's I was hoping to hide behind it, but you're right.
So, I left, I You know, back in You have a And I'd like to see you again. And I heard someone got the spreadsheet, like
What?
I heard someone got the spreadsheet.
Yeah, right, that's true.
That's gold.
Sending a lot of stuff out. I never know where it's going.
So, you've responded
That's what we're looking for.
People ask, it's, you know. It's kind of funny, I don't, you know. Email? I think that's just Yeah, yeah. We don't need
I think that
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah. We used to, you know I mean, you know, the guy that
Yeah, all right, so it's 6:30. Thank you, in particular to Lucy and Jake for joining us from the Regional School District Planning Board, as well as many others. The way that we, this is going to work, that Lucy and Jake are going to offer a presentation, and then there'll be a question and answer period.
Sure. What's the best way to do the presentation, the slides, or?
As far as tech.
Yeah, as far as tech, yeah. So, people at home would want to see it, I assume, right?
Yeah, I don't know that we are going to be able to set that up at this.
The only other option I could do is I could log in. Is this like a Zoom account or something?
It's a go-to meeting, you know.
And then I could share from the F I presenter
Yeah, I think that's possible.
You could try?
Yeah, we can try it.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't realize that aspect.
Yeah, I mean, the only other option is that you all could project the slide that I sent you. I don't think they changed them actually, they just won't have the animations on. And when we bring, you know, some of the slides over here.
Yeah.
What, what would you like me to?
Do you want to try to log in?
Sure.
Can we sit up there so we don't have our best?
Yeah.
Great.
Is this, is this the computer that's
Yeah. Yeah.
Justin, do you know who the, who that owner is on that, who's running the meeting?
This, this computer is here.
I was just thinking, he can email you the slide.
Yeah, I'm not logged in, like, no, I'm I didn't, yeah, we've never
Yeah, I don't know if he's gonna be able to find you.
Check in to the internet here. Kind of Monterey guest. Kind of Monterey guest.
Is there a Monterey guest open? Wifi?
Uh.
It's Monterey Town Hall.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's town of Monterey guest.
You don't have a, you don't have a flash drive to put on it?
No. Yeah, it's looking for password. Ah, I have a flash drive, but it's my bag at home.
Yes, my.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, does the wifi have a password? For Town Hall?
Yes.
Yeah, it's locked.
Can I share next view? Does that help? Does that work?
Sometimes it works.
Yeah. Get a shot.
But I think you have to be on the same.
I don't know if it's sharing, it's not sharing, it should if it's. My door cuffed, it didn't make go.
I can share the screen from here.
You can?
Yeah.
All right, so we're halfway there.
So.
Okay.
So I was able to log in. I logged back up again from Monterey revert, but it was possible. It didn't make you can see though, so you have to kind of know what you're doing.
So you, Susan, you can log in?
I was able to log into the meeting. There were, we were having people that weren't able to get on it, but I, I had to launch the app that's already downloaded on our machine to get it, to accept it, wouldn't do it with the regular offline version.
So Jake can sign into the meeting, but he needs to know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to go through my phone.
Yeah, it's, the cell is not great here, but it might be strong.
I'm giving it a shot.
Okay.
It's going to be one man in person.
Yeah.
Where is the wifi password?
It's not packed on a wall?
It's on the wall somewhere.
I think it's like. It's just Monterey. All lowercase.
Ask them associate on the.
Melissa, what's the wifi password for Town Hall?
Monterey, all lowercase.
Hey, you got a date?
This can get in, right?
Yep. That's the team.
I can't. I can never like to do.
Yeah.
You kind of. I did that sign on.
I don't think I've just.
That can be funny, yeah. Just, that's a cool.
Yeah.
That one?
Yep.
What's the meeting ID? No, I think somebody could read it off here.
Yeah.
That's.
Tell me when you're ready.
Tell me it off to.
Do you want it, Jake? Not yet.
That's not.
Up here, it's got to go down here to the.
Yes, ready.
Nine, six, eight. Six, seven, seven. Seven, eight, one.
Seven, eight, one.
You can also launch it by going to the select order agenda for tonight and copying and pasting.
But I think it wants, it's asking that he has a.
Maybe.
He has, it appears that he can't use go-to meeting without creating a new server.
Let, you have to how to dash on it. If you have to, if you choose the online version and they want you to do that, but if you download the app, they should say don't. I, I have no explanation for that.
Yeah, he's got, he's doing it through his browser now. Let's see if that works. Can you see him now?
Waiting for an answer. Yes.
Okay.
Way to go.
All right, someone shared the screen.
Yeah, I got, it's got a position here.
Excellent.
Exactly.
Are you able to share a screen?
You might have to allow him to. There's a share on.
We are, I think you're, you're just kind of from audio.
It's called integrity.
You left. Nothing. That's weird.
You're off.
Yeah, you're off. Never dull moment.
No, I guess not. I kind of. Turn off my mic. Perfect. I've got my sound off, which I know.
Yeah, it says your point's off, so you should be good.
I didn't get any.
So now it's just a question of the share screen. Do you want to, oh, because share would be from that computer, what else?
Are you able to share your screen?
I can't, no.
I think you have to give it permission.
Yeah, you have, might have to give the permission, exactly. Thank you.
I'll go see here.
There.
All right, now you can share.
One side of it.
I'm sure.
Perfect.
Small.
They can go full screen with it.
I was just going to say go full screen or put the, all the people in that right hand.
Close the settings.
Yeah.
Without closing the whole. Always.
Is that pretty?
No, I think you want to. You scroll down on the settings.
No. Yep, scroll down, there you go.
There it is. All right, now you should be able to go full screen.
You couldn't make this information while you're doing it.
I know, right?
Lesson.
Everybody want a tutorial and?
We already got one. That's what I'm saying, Brad. Two, two things at once.
Um, what's the top right icon? That's zoom, the one above the zoomer. Is that one? Which, which I guess. All right, well, that's enough there. No, no, but leave it there, that's not bad.
Hit the zoom again.
It's a nice ledge.
Hit the zoom once more, please.
It just, it doesn't include the whole thing.
But he can scroll, I think, once you.
Yeah, but I think it looks like it's most of the page, so I think it might be okay. There's a page number. Are you?
Sure. I think, really?
Let's do it.
Call my mother.
So. For those of you who. Aren't familiar, this is Lucy Prasher, who's the Chair of the Eight Towns Regional School District Planning Board. I can't believe I got that right. And Jake Everwin, who, I'm.
Project manager.
Project manager. Of course, same.
Yep.
Um, so you're on, Jake.
Yeah, and I don't know if Matt Abrahams is on the call.
He looked, he was a while back.
Okay, great, so Matt is our financial analyst.
Yeah.
So, um, if Matt is allowed to speak at any point, that'd be great, because, um, I know one of the intents of the meeting tonight was to do a closer look at the finance. And so if there's particular questions, Matt's probably better equipped to answer those than anybody.
Okay.
I'll have on, I'm going to kick it to Lucy, she's just going to do sort of just an introduction of, I think, for who we are and, yeah, a little bit of context.
Okay, well, I, I just want to start by thanking you for inviting us, um, to be here in person. It's, it's always a privilege to be able to sit next to the folks, um, that we're talking to and really happy that we're able to be here. I know you've got really specific questions, and I know the select board members, uh, were at our eight town select board meeting, so we don't, we don't want to repeat all that content, we want to get your specific questions. I just want to provide a little bit of context as to where we are in terms of planning. Um, so as you probably all know, we took a vote back in July, uh, to recommend merger based on the performance regional agreement. That was still subject to Dussie review and some additional legal review. We've gone through that review, um, and we're pretty much there. Um, we have some tweaks to the agreement that we will be circulating to our poll board probably early next week. Uh, well, well, more than a week before our next meeting, which is now scheduled, or will soon be scheduled for either September twenty sixth or September twenty seventh. It's looking right now like it's going to be September twenty sixth. So at that meeting, the expectation is that we will be voting on the final version of the agreement, uh, at which point this gets forwarded to the select boards in the eight towns. And under the statute, those select boards are required to put the recommendation on, uh, a warrant for special town meeting within thirty days. Now, you know, we're, we're hoping for an October twenty three special town meeting in at least some of the towns. Uh, it would be great if it was happening on the same day in all the towns, but we don't know if that's feasible. It's really up to the towns to decide. Um, but we do know that Great Barrington has scheduled a special town meeting throughout October twenty third, and I think some of the other towns are, are trying to do the same. So that's sort of where we are on timing. Um, and I want Jake just to sort of level set us in terms of what the recommendation is, and then really to address the very specific questions that you've asked, um, relating to finance. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions on any topic tonight, and we'll stay as long, as long as you would like.
Sure. Thank you. So, um, the core question that we had, that the board had from the very beginning was, you know, can the districts do better as a combined eight town versus two independent districts with three towns and five towns? And that's really what has been studied for the last couple of years. Um, the recommendation the board reached in April of twenty two? How far are we away now? Was that the districts, we looked a lot of some. That the, um, best solution would be to merge the two districts into a single combined pre-K through twelve district while maintaining the existing elementary and middle school and merging the high school into a newly instructed, um, facility that would be built on a big, big campus. That's a recommendation we've really been working on since then and is baked into the regional agreement. Um, I only share this, I think most folks know this, but just in case there's any, um, people who are just, you know, joining the conversation, I want to make sure they understand what the recommendation is. It's interesting how we still get a lot of folks who do think, um, their elementary schools are being closed, and it's just not true. Elementary schools are, are really remaining untouched. It's interesting to jump into finance, which is really, I think, what the select board was interested in talking about tonight, having this review. Because the board, and certainly I, um, really want to leave with education. And we, we did that in the presentation to the joint select board. Um, we, you know, a lot of the, the impetus be, behind regionalization tends to be some sort of fiscal moment where there's some real stress, right? So in twenty fifteen, a big group assembled in, in Central Berkshire to tackle an issue of not, you know, of, you know, stretched resources and wondering whether they could maintain other schools, keeping them open. And that led to the task force, which looked sort of globally across, across the county. And I think the same thing probably was part of the original intent here, which brought people together, was how, how are we going to financially afford our schools? But really, it quickly turns into how do we ensure that our school, our kids are getting the best possible educational experience? Because I think that's really, at the end of the day, what's most important. But, but tonight is really about finance, we're certainly willing to answer other questions, so I'm going to jump right into the finance work, and Matt will help me when, when needed. This is the slide we shared at the, um, eight town joint meeting, which was just sort of an introduction to the finance. The finance subcommittee worked over, um, well over a year, probably a year and a half, to develop, um, a number of, to explore a number of finance, of fiscal models for apportionment of costs to the towns. And we ended up in the solution, um, developing model, which you're going to see tonight, both for the capital side and for the operating side. But in addition to that, the merger also generated, um, savings, which were realized in the neighborhood of one point two to one point eight million dollars a year, and that really comes as a result of efficiencies and, and, um, uh, combinations of two systems coming together and being able to create efficiencies in particular role types, uh, and then classroom, class size balancing. As the subcommittee that was led by Nadine Haver, uh, went through, you know, the challenging task of trying to come up with a fair fiscal model, uh, they really wanted to guard against any one town feeling like, um, you know, our, the solution, um, was better for them or worse for them. And so this idea of no stark winners or losers, this entire model was challenging, but I think we've come up with a solution that hopefully, um, you know, addressed that. And then the second thing was to, to smooth the year-to-year changes, which can occur, um, in communities where, you know, assessments on a year-to-year basis can jump for a particular town for a variety of reasons. And so building in smoother so that those, those, and those, those sort of peaks, those intense peaks are sort of knocked down a bit is something that the subcommittee really worked hard at. Um, so this particular graph is just a combination of, uh, this is merger versus no merger in terms of total costs. The merger of the blue bar, the, um, no merger is the gray bar, and obviously the obvious, um, you know, takeaway from this particular graph is there's less money being invested in the merger situation than no merger. Finance generally is broken into two major categories, operating expenses and capital expenses. I'm not going to talk about capital, but we're happy to answer questions about the new high school and about how it's being paid for, how a hundred million dollars is derived. People are asking these questions around the interest rate, and how many years, and is a hundred million correct, you know? You know, we're getting, a, a lot of those questions are being repeated, but we, what I think I heard from you all was that you wanted to talk a little bit more about the operating expenses and sort of how those things were derived. So these were the questions we received from you, um, that we're going to work through tonight, uh, and we're happy again to answer others as. So these were the questions we received from you, um, that we're gonna work through tonight, uh, and we're happy again to answer others as they are, are, are asked. I'll jump right in. First question is, what was the base year for the, um, five-year, five-year rolling average calculation of the cap? And, um, again, that, that, our assumption when we, when we developed the projections for, when Matt developed the projection forward, was that the first fiscal year of the merger would be fiscal year twenty six? So in order to do the five-year rolling average, we went all the way back to FY twenty two and we looked at budgets starting back there and then ran the average on the five years that led into the FY twenty six. So I think that's really simply stated the answer to that question. And hopefully that, that addresses that question. If there's any, I think, else related to that, I'm happy, I don't know who actually asked the question specifically, but.
For me, I did.
Okay, good.
So the question was asked because, A, we see a lot of variation between pre-COVID and post-COVID and the differences. And two, we'd love to crosswalk that with the actual enrollment figures to look at the factor of the years that the base is based on, has that tracked with the projections for the out-years and the numbers of students will have.
Yeah, I mean, the best I can tell you is that, you know, the five-year rolling average and certainly, you know, I think the COVID effect is, is there for everybody. But the five-year rolling average actually in, in, in of itself is a smoothing mechanism. And so that, you know, you don't have the intensity of an enrollment shift that can really spike a town's assessment in a particular year. Rather, you look at this five-year average to try to smooth any sort of peaks and valleys that may have occurred during that period of time. So this is, in effect, the, um, the model that Southern Berkshire uses currently, we adopted their model. Uh, you know, Berkshire Hills actually uses a different model, either a resident student enrollment model, which actually is a year-to-year and can spike more.
Yeah.
And the subcommittee felt like, um, the five-year smoother average was, was the first smoothing mechanism that's actually built into the model. I hope the answers your question, but, yes. Um, how is each town's assessment calculated? It really requires, I'm gonna walk through the methodology, which I hope doesn't confuse people. Um, but I'll do the best I can. All right? So the next couple of slides cover that. The operating methodology is, um, is really broken into three parts. And so the Department of Education requires, under the statute, that every town contributes its required local contribution. And that required local contribution is calculated by the Department of Education in concert with the Department of Revenue. It involves, um, looking at foundation enrollment, it involves looking at community wealth, um, income. And, um, all of those things factor into, um, ultimately a price tag that towns are expected to contribute towards their schools. And so each of the towns has a required local contribution, that all gets totaled and that becomes the district's required local contribution. Interesting thing is, school districts spend a lot beyond what's required. And so the state requires that everyone do this regulatory methodology, but they don't have any requirement in how you deal with how you're allocating money over the required. Okay, so that's really where our methodology comes in. The statutory methodology exists currently in Southern Berkshire, it exists currently in Berkshire Hills, there's no change. Okay, so I just wanna make sure everyone understands that part A is a statutory method. We could have actually come up with an alternative methodology. The problem with an alternative methodology is that you have to have it approved every single year by your town and by the commissioner. It's kind of a bear, you know, so the idea is stay within the statutory methodology, get it in your regional agreement, and then it, it stays there until the regional agreement is amended. Part B is the amount that districts spend over the required, uh, and that's really where we, the committee decided to use, um, the five-year rolling averages to assess that amount of money, which is planned above required in apportioning it out to the towns. So we look at the five-year average, we figure out what percentage of each town is part of the hundred percent, and then we look at the total over and then apply that percentage out based on the five-year average. However, um, we put in an additional, what we're referring to as a safety valve or a cap. And this was after a lot of discussion, we had, um, we ran this a lot of different ways. We ran this, this EQV, we ran it as straight required local, we ran it as foundation, we ran it as resident enrollment. We had a methodology early on, we were calling whole harmless, that we ultimately scrapped. But this was actually, um, I think you came up with the idea originally. And it was the idea is can we cap the increase in the assessment in a town at a particular level? So that even if a town did have a change occur, um, they would be, their, their increase would be controlled at some level. We wouldn't, uh, we wouldn't assess them, you wouldn't see this massive spike in one town.
If I could just add on that, so, because there's a lot of confusion on this, it's controlled relative to the other towns.
Right.
Right? So if the district assessment goes up five percent, we don't control that, right? But the, the two percent cap means that no town is gonna go up more than seven percent, two percent on the five percent. Because this question gets asked a lot, well, how, how can you control what happens in the district in terms of its expenses? The cap doesn't address that. The cap just says no town out of the eight is gonna rise more than two percent more than the, uh, overall assessment increase for the district. So it's, it's evening out things of the towns relative to each other. But it, it doesn't seek to control and can't control, obviously, what the assessment is in the district. That's decided by school leadership and school committee as to what the budget's gonna be.
So whatever that total assessment is, the increase is from last year to this year, let's say, for example, three percent. We add an additional two percent as our safety valve. That's, ends up being a total of five percent and no town can have its assessment rise higher than five percent. But if your superintendent, your committee, um, pass a budget that increases ten percent, right? And it makes it to the town floor, then the cap would be twelve percent, right? So it's gonna be two percent higher than what the, um, the increase was from last year to this year. So let me run you through some illustrations.
Oh, should I say, if you had an example of that at the meeting?
We did, yeah. So this is a, these are a few more slides than I had last time. So I hope, again, it's not overwhelming, but I'm gonna try to walk people through it. So the district develops an operating budget, in this case, it's fifty-five point seven million dollars. The backout revenues, um, and savings, so those would be, um, things like, uh, chapter seventy funds that are coming in, um, or other revenues that may have it offset the operating cost and you come up with a net amount that you're gonna assess out to the town. In this case, it's forty-four point five million. Everyone understands that, I think, relatively easily. So part A of the formula is the state comes up with its required local contribution. If you wanna see how that works, I'd be happy to show folks at some point, but you've got, you can go to the Department of Ed website. You can look up chapter seventy, you can go to each town's and each region's basically worksheet, where it shows you, there's a series of steps that you go through. It's a little, uh, complicated in some ways, but, um, this is the required amount that each, uh, town is expected to pay, um, towards that budget.
It's just good to point out that this, these school districts and those very few school districts operate on this amount of money.
That's correct.
Right? So although we talk about going above the minimum as as a, as an alternative or an option, it's really not an option, right? You can't run a district on nineteen million dollars.
That's right. Thank you. Yes.
Just a point of clarification, is Alfred missing a one at the front of the number?
No.
No. No.
It's a tiny town.
They have like eighteen students.
With a lot of old people.
Yeah. That's right.
All right, so we're gonna jump into, so.
Good question. I'll take that.
They look pretty nice.
Yeah.
You have to write a line in.
So the balance that is left above the required, the minimum, is twenty-five million. So we have to figure out how we're gonna partition out that twenty-five million dollars.
Can I ask a point, Tony?
Sure.
So there's still gonna be these local boards, or you said anything else above, or now it's just one board? That confused me.
Sorry.
You said originally, right, that this is the state formula and then part B is what the local boards assess.
Yeah, this is, yeah, so part B is what we have built in to the proposed regional agreement as the methodology for how we would apportion out the spending above required.
Right, so it's not a local anymore, it's the region.
It would be the region.
I just wanna make clear.
Yes, thank you.
Single spoken.
That's, that was unclear before, anyone else?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is one of the most important structural elements of the regional agreement. I mean, it's school committee composition is another. But, all right, so we're.
Just to clarify for Eileen, is it correct that the amount in addition to the nineteen million, which is the minimum required, is divvied up based on a five-year rolling average of those towns' minimums?
The state minimum is year-to-year.
But when, when you determine the amount in excess, or the, the?
We will be using five years.
The five-year rolling, rolling average in, in addition to?
Yes.
Okay.
Right, yeah, yeah. Now we partition out.
I mean, the question is, like, how much is it smoothing? Is really the question. What's the variation? Which you don't have to go into now, it's just a question for us.
Sure, fair.
So we've been using a rolling average for decades, at least in Southern Berkshire. And in fact, I believe at one point we had a ten-year rolling average.
That's really smart.
Twenty years ago, I can't remember, but we always had a rolling average of a certain, of, of, at least five years. And I don't remember, at some point, when we restated the agreement, we may have dropped it and nobody was happy about that, I can't quite remember. But anyway, it's, it's, it's commonly used and we use it.
I think you and I worked on an amendment to the, to the regional agreement about twenty-five years ago.
Yes, we did.
Where we, uh, adopted this rolling average.
Right.
It was a big deal and it's been very popular with the towns, because it does, uh, despite we had it before.
And just one other question, because I'm kinda new to the, um, the regional agreements here, I know them in other states. And is this every cost in, special ed, transportation, this is all in?
It's all in.
Okay, just wanna make sure it's all in.
Yeah, with, with the exception of capital.
Okay, obviously.
Capital is separate.
That's my kid.
Good timing.
Okay, cuz that wasn't clear either, thank you for making that clear, that it's all in.
Yeah, so, um, and we do have, uh, a set of slides on the capital specifically, but, um, it wasn't our intent to do that tonight, but we're happy to. So this is part B, we have twenty-five million now to allocate. We, um, look at the five-year average required minimums for each town over the last five years, so in this case, it's twenty twenty-two, four to five years. And then based on the whole, a percentage is, uh, is assessed, is determined for each community. So what you can see is Great Barrington, um, is, is, carries about forty-four and a half percent of the budget, while Alfred is carrying a little over one percent. All right? Making sense now? Okay.
Conference will now be recorded.
That's a shame.
All right, so now, um, we applied a safety valve and, um, in this particular case, um, the increase for assessments from FY twenty-five to FY twenty-six was only one point two percent. And I, this is interesting, because people will say, wow, that's a really low increase, you know? If the district brings you that, you'd be really happy with your district, superintendent, your school committee. The reason it's one point two percent is we also tamp down the increase with the savings. So we applied the savings in to pull down the operating expenses in this particular year. So it's important that folks understand that that's one of the reasons why that number is smaller. But we look at last year, we look at this year, it was a one point two increase, we add the two percent onto that, and that becomes our three point two percent cap. So no town can have an assessment higher than three point two percent as compared to last year, right? That's how we get to that safety valve.
Assuming the increase over the prior year is one point two percent.
That's right.
I just wanna make a note here, because we're asked about this a lot.
Yeah.
So we applied all the savings that, we applied one point five million, which was the midpoint between our range of one point two and one point eight. Just pick the midpoint, applied all that to tamp down assessments. That's a decision that would be made by the school committee, right? Whether to apply all of those savings to tamp down assessments, just as they do now. They decide, uh, whether they're going to take money out of E and D, right, to tamp down assessments or not. So it could be that that one point two percent is actually two point two percent in that first year, or three percent. It, that's a decision that would be up to the school committee to make and the towns ultimately to make when they either approve or don't approve the budget. So I just wanted to, to footnote that, because, um, it could be that the school committee decides, oh, we're gonna take some of that savings, some of that one point five million dollars, and invest in some educational enhancement with it. And our regional agreement, of course, doesn't control that, just as our existing regional agreement doesn't control, uh, how the school committee, uh, puts together its budget with the superintendent and school leadership.
I do have one question about the previous slide.
Sure.
The percentages on the right, those, the, it's divided among the towns on the basis of what? On the basis of number of students attending, or, you know, on average attending, EQV, what, what determined those percentages that are in the right-hand column? Or, you know, the, the, those percentages are probably how much they're paying, but how much they're paying is a function of what?
Required local contribution.
The VDS, right?
The five-year average, I see, okay, and that.
That's where those percentages come from.
Okay.
So we, we often get asked the question, like, what would drive required local contribution? And so there's a couple of tests in the worksheet, as you all know. And so you have a foundation enrollment, and that's a starting point, um, but they also look at wealth and income. But what the department does, it takes the lower of the two. And so right now, I think all of our towns are being driven by foundation enrollment. Doesn't mean it will always be that way in the future, but, um, that's pretty much how it's playing for, it's pretty much foundation enrollment, which is determining required local. And, and Matt, we looked at all the worksheets to confirm that, cuz that was a question that, that people asked. And then the only other piece that people should be aware of is the state also does have a whole harmless provision in chapter seventy. And that communities with declining enrollment actually don't have their chapter seventy pulled back. And, you know, we wrote a white paper, um, two years ago on that, because there was some chatter around re-establishing, um, that whole harmless and saying, well, it's not really fair, given the loans going down, that, that money is still being provided to those communities. And we argued strongly that that would, that would just really crush rural, rural communities.
Right.
So.
So just to, may I, just to draw the line here, so the difference in this three point two percent, which has been what the, the, what was the three point two percent we spoke about?
It's the cap.
The cap, the, the corridor for the cap is that prior to this, when they were, when the school boards were making decisions about spending that money, they were all kind of equal players. And I understand the composition, I'm not trying to make a comment, a, a, a political statement, I'm just trying to understand how it works. They were all kind of the same kind of players. Now, you have one player with forty-four percent, which is reflected in the composition of the board, and the others with less. So as you're deciding whether to tamp down or not, you have people with very different, um, realities.
No, it was never equal.
I don't think that they were ever equal.
No, the five-town district of Southern Berkshire always had percentage differences based on.
Right, 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 I'm saying, right, but I'm saying, look at the percentage difference now. Everybody else is kind of close, and then you have this big gorilla in the room, 44%, which is now part of the decision-making.
But if you looked at Southern Berkshire, Sheffield is the big gorilla.
Oh, because it would have been on a different scale, thank you. Okay, that's what I was asking, perfect, that's what I wanted, I appreciate it, thank you.
I'll jump to the next slide, just to start to illustrate how this plays out with real numbers. And so now, what happens is, we, we're adding in A and B, and we're looking at the total change, like, how did Alfred, Eggerman, Great Barrington, Monterey, you all, change from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26? And what we see, when the districts combined, is that Monterey saw a massive spike in their assessment, massive spike. 17.6%. But the good news is that, with the cap, the safety valve applied, no community can be assessed above 3.2%. And so that's how we're gonna control for this really excessive spike that occurred when the two districts came together. So these were the changes, we had the three Berkshire Hills districts went down, the five Southern Berkshire districts, a tenth went up. So again, the amount that was over the 3.2% was 1.5 million dollars, and so we had to re, we have to reallocate that. So for the towns who are under the cap, we're gonna be applying 1.5 million towards them. For the towns over the cap, we're gonna be pulling them down 1.5 million. And so, again, redistribute the over to the under. All right, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yep.
So would the ones who are going down still be down?
You'll see it on this slide. This next slide shows where they end up.
So in the next slide, we, we adjust with the 1.5 million dollars, and you can see the brackets are where the assessments are going down. So in Monterey, your assessment was reduced by $303,000. And that brings you all the way down to the 3.2% cap. Great Barrington, on the other hand, which, in the previous slide, if you remember, was at negative 5.8 reduction, is only now at 0.5% reduction. They still are going down, but not at the same rate, because they picked up the excess, and that was in the towns that were well over the cap.
Excuse me. I understand the cap concept, but where do the percentages on the previous slide actually come from?
Which one, please?
That one.
Yeah, that's the change from last year, FY '25, FY '26.
Derived how?
Derived how?
Derived how?
Oh, we just have the total, that, it would be basically, you, you all have an amount which is assessed by your school district to you, and so it's that total amount of the required plus the amount over.
I think the question is, why, for example, is Monterey, or we apply the cap?
Yes.
Why is Monterey going up 7.6%? That's your question. 17.6%.
That's the question.
Yeah, that's the question, and the reason is that if you apply the five-year rolling average, that percentage, to this budget, that's where you would end up without a smoother. So, and the reason that's happening, and this is the question Susan has at our eight-town board meeting, is that the two districts have different per pupil costs. And the per pupil cost currently at Southern Berkshire is lower than the per pupil cost at Berkshire Hills. So there, without the cap, there would be this shift of about a million dollars, isn't that right, Jay? From the Berkshire Hills town over to the Southern Berkshire towns. And we knew that was a non-starter.
Yes.
Right? And so that's why we developed this cap, to make sure that none of the Southern Berkshire towns got hit in this way in the first year of the merger. So that's what the formula produces if you don't have the cap, which is why we saw an absolute need for an additional smoother in addition to the five-year rolling average. And that's where the idea for the, the safety valve or cap came from.
Lucy, what doesn't make sense to me is, I understand that your, your, part of the assessment is the five-year rolling average for additional, of the, of the required, required local contribution for the additional amount over the required local contribution. But you say that Southern Berkshire already uses that, so that isn't really at play in terms of the Southern Berkshire assessments. And then I can understand that if Southern Berkshire is paying less per pupil now in operating expenses, if we merge the two, you'd see them, and, and then you'd try to divide it by required local contribution, five-year rolling average. Obviously, more is gonna be expected of the Southern Berkshire towns, but within the district, there's still wide variations of Alfred going up 5.9% and Monterey going up 17.6%. So it seems to me that there's something beyond just the different districts having different operating costs per pupil now. And I don't know what that is. But it seems like it can't just be boiled down to two different districts, because otherwise, wouldn't all the towns and the districts be at, at the same or very similar?
So right now, in Southern Berkshire, if you look at the year-over-year changes, percentages of the five towns in Southern Berkshire, they are, they are just as varied. So if, if a gross budget in Southern Berkshire increases 2%, that doesn't mean that Monterey and Alfred and Sheffield all get a 2% increase. It doesn't. So that's not new, that's carrying over. As you say, though, the hit, which is why we have the 2% cap, is that the per pupil costs in Great, in the Great Barrington district and the, and the Berkshire Hills district is higher. They spend more money per pupil than Southern Berkshire. So as you say, if, when you merge, that will go up. And that will affect, that will magnify the differences in the five Southern Berkshire towns in the first year, but it's still based on the same criteria that makes the, that makes the difference in the five towns now. So Monterey could get hit with a 9% assessment increase in the same year that Sheffield has a 2% now, and Alfred nothing.
And the percentages, it's probably a sort of numbers effect of the number of pupils they have and their existing budget. So then, when it gets bumped up, it, it ends up feeling like it's a smaller, it's a smaller percentage, even though it's a large block of money, because it's a smaller percentage of a larger amount.
Yes, even if, even with the five-year average. And you have to remember that certain towns in Berkshire, in Southern Berkshire are quote-unquote richer than other towns. And. And so they, they're gonna carry more costs relative, not in absolute terms, in relative terms, because it's part of the.
So, and, you know, Justin, if you wanted Matt to run a specific analysis of why that particular change, I mean, we've been asked a lot of questions, we've run a lot of, you know, some very, very detailed questions. I'm sure he could probably explain why Monterey's at 17.6 and Alfred's at 5.9 very quickly. I can't, um, not without looking specifically at what the numbers were that led into that. Right? This is the entire change on one slide, just so you can see the before, after. And then graphically, this is the before, and then adding the cap on, this is the after. So we basically, you know, level everything at 3.2%, and people are either at or below it. And that's really the, the intent of the methodology.
I'm assuming that if you extend the prediction past year one, the, we should start seeing, yeah, it should level out. That's just that first year that has such an enormous change.
Yeah, the structural, the structural challenge was year one, like, combined year, right? But we also think it does provide, it's an interesting methodology, it provides some protections long range, too. So, I don't know, I mean, it, it likely will play itself out, it won't really have an effect once we get through the initial, you know, merger, but it's still there.
Can I just pick up on that protections long range? So just for perspective, so 36% of our town budget of about $5 million is spent on education. And last year, we had about a 10% increase from 2023 to 2024 in education. So what you're saying is the long-term, the term you just used, long-term impact is, we are now agreeing that we will have a, what's the whole number, five plus two? We will have a, we will have a definite 7.5% increase year-over-year, and maybe more, depending on whatever that other situation. Or how, I, I bet you I'm trying to get, how do you look at that?
No, I don't think so, it's, every year, the safety valve and the cap are reassessed, they're recalculated.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, because you.
So we're buying into it one year?
Everything advances a year.
With the DS.
The five-year rolling averages the next five years.
So in the first year, it's the 5%?
No, sorry, it's the only number that stays the same is that, that each individual town can't go up more than 2% over the increase of the whole district. So if the district goes up 20%, your town could go up 22%. If it goes up, if the district stays at 0%, your town is capped at 2%.
No, I understand that, but I'm trying to understand, what is the actual trend number for the first year? I'll do this formula.
You, you guys, for you all, 3.2%?
Total all-in.
Total all-in.
For, for.
For your operating.
For operating, not, that's, yeah, okay, that's all I'm asking, okay, number one.
Yeah, so we, all right.
Again, assuming all savings are applied to tamp down the assessment.
That's what I'm saying.
That's the 1.2%.
That's the 1.2, okay, that's, so that could be higher, that could be higher.
All right, I'm just gonna, um, Justin, I'm just gonna flash through a couple of slides, which are reference slides. So on our website, on the front of the page, eighttown.org, you have a finance button. And it has some finance facts, at the very bottom, they're all, all eight towns are linked. And you can click on Monterey, and the slides I'm about to show you are the links from the page. We tried to, there's so much data, it's just an incredible amount of data that Matt ran. He has worksheets, I'm happy to share big spreadsheets with folks who are interested in going deeper. But we wanted to synthesize things in a way that people could readily at least understand what the projections look like. So each town had just a basic snapshot, and then we ran the model in a no-merger and a merger scenario. And keep in mind that all of our work has a set of assumptions. Matt is very clear about his assumptions, he talks about them, they're in all of our presentations. And so we just want to be crystal clear about that. But in this particular slide, the gray is no merger. So if you can't read this slide, which many of you, I can't read it from here, but the blue is the merger, and this is Monterey. You will see that we are projecting that the, the expenses to Monterey will be lowered in the merger scenario as compared to the no-merger. Yes, sir?
I don't understand how building a $100 million school and, and knocking down the other school, and 100 million, I think, is soft, how it comes out cheaper?
Yeah.
Well, this is operating.
This is operating.
Okay, so you've gotta add capital to this.
Yes.
So.
No, this is, um.
So we're paying for a new school.
Sorry, 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 this is a total assessment, so this is with the new school.
Yeah. How, how is it possible?
This is with.
That 100 million dollar plus, and we're paying less?
Because the Berkshire Hills towns are paying 90% of the new school, 90% in the first.
And the state's paying about 10%.
And the state paying 40%.
We don't.
First.
Wait, they're paying 90%, and the state's paying 40%?
That'd be a good deal, I would say.
100 million reduced by about 46 million? Do we remember the figure roughly, 100 million, the state's contribution?
The way it works is, assuming 100 million, and it works in the sum of 110 million, 1.2 million. This is the methodology. Assume 100 million, you then allocate 90% to the Berkshire Hills town, 10% to the Southern Berkshire town. Then you apply the state aid.
Which is about?
So you apply about 48% to the Berkshire Hill side, that is 90 million. And then you apply the regional incentive aid, 6% to the Southern Berkshire side. So the five Southern Berkshire towns are responsible for debt service on only 4% of the cost of the new school. And, and when you actually work down to the numbers of what Monterey would be paying for that new school, it's relatively modest, and actually less, and Jake's gonna get to this in the slides, I think it'll answer the question. It's less than what we project this town would be paying for Chapter 74 students who may be electing to go to a Chapter 74 program at Berkshire Hills. He's got a slide that shows that.
That's school choice?
No, no, it's not school choice, it's something that's separate. It's tuition that has to be paid by the individual town, and the projected cost per student, for every student who elects to do that in Monterey, is 26,000 per student. So you have three students.
Plus transfer. Right.
That includes transportation.
Yeah, that was our, that's, that, we think that's a modest.
Yeah, but we have a slide that illustrates all this.
Yeah.
But, but that's how it can happen.
Just note that if you got one of these packets, and I think there are more if you didn't get one, that breakdown is on the very back page of the 100 million dollar new school. Ken?
On the back page. So basically, you're banking on Monterey's savings by not, it's considering that's 20% of the tuition, kids coming out of Monterey are going to a Chapter 74, and we're paying 26,000 per kid. So it's not real savings, it's an assumption that that many kids will be choicing to that school, which is where the savings comes in, correct?
That's right, we, we're, and I do have a slide where I assume we calculated what we believe, based on expected participation would be, the number of kids who would be expected to go to Chapter 74, but not guaranteed.
Right.
But you have to do some kind of estimate.
You have to do some, you just already to do one.
But I just, but to call it a, a savings is not really a savings, it's a.
A sum, a sum.
Yeah, so let's clarify, it's, it's projected savings, it's not guaranteed, but it's what our projections. And I just wanted to clarify.
Mickey Jersey.
Yeah, um, in September's Monterey News, there was an article by Dr. Colburn, who is back here, he's part of your group. And he assumed, and I don't know where he got these numbers, but using his numbers, because I didn't, I already got them, he said that the average house would pay an increase, the average tax house in Monterey would pay an increase of $50, okay? And that didn't count the vacant lots that pay taxes. So if you paid $50 more for the average house, and there's 842 houses, that would give us $42,100. Assuming that if you just had a lot, you're not gonna pay that much, and I said maybe $20, that would give us another $10,000. So every year, if you, on a house, paid $50 more, and a lot could pay $20 more, you would have $52,100, which would pay for two students going to this special education, vocational education. So if you use his figures, he looks, he's got, well, you're paying $50,000, $50 tax, or you're gonna pay 26,000. It's really apples and zebras he's comparing, you're not.
I think we've got a slide that's.
You have a slide that shows that.
All those questions, yes.
Because it's just very misleading in that article.
No, I think this article is accurate, but you'll see where those numbers come from.
All right, so the next snapshot, again, and I would just encourage folks to go to the website, these are all extracted from much bigger spreadsheets and worksheets, which are actually all, also online. It's just, I know that it's, can be difficult for folks to navigate and unpack those worksheets, so we did these composite snapshots. This particular snapshot, we just picked three fiscal years, '26, '28, and '30. We did not project beyond '30. We did not project beyond '30. And we compared, we, and this particular graph, you can certainly just focus on the total assessment. But we also did factor in the cost of the new high school and/or capital cost that'd be associated with the town. And as you can see, in the merger versus no merger scenario, you know, based on the way that we're projecting, Monterey would end up saving money when looking at these three particular fiscal years. The next slide.
For those who can't really read what those savings are, maybe you can call out what those numbers are.
Yeah, so in fiscal year '26, it's $206,000. In fiscal year '28, it's $205,000. And fiscal year '30, it's 182 and change thousand dollars.
And did you use a trend factor for the other years?
I can't hear you.
Did you, since we're talking ahead two years, because we're at fiscal year '24, did you use trend factor? Those are present value numbers.
I don't know if Matt's on the phone. He could certainly give you a little bit of a snapshot of how he did this projection. But yes, it's all based on historical trends and projecting forward based on those trends. Yes. So we did foundation enrollment forecasting by town. And that's, we did budget increase forecasting by overall budget. And so those are actually listed in the assumptions in the worksheets.
So our savings is including $520,000 that you're charging for tuition students to go in in that number, where the verge, merge, no merge? So you're saying 20% of our children, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. That was my bad. How many children, I think, come from Monterey?
Good question. I'm not here with the current.
Honey?
We actually have a slide on that.
So basically, you're charging $26,000 a year for whatever, 20% and calling, and then saying, well, this number's here, this number here, you're now saving this number. I'm a little confused, I guess.
We're just looking at the total assessments that Monterey would be assessed under the merger and no merger scenario.
But the merger, no merger scenario is the no, the merger is saving money and the no merger is adding that figure, that assumption figure. So the savings.
The assumption you mean, meaning the?
We're paying tuition for these students.
The three vocational tuition students? Yeah, I think that's what we have.
It's only three students.
Right. That's what I was asking, which is.
Yeah.
I'm certain. And, and the three kids, what was that based on? I'm just curious.
So you're saying.
I have no idea how you come up with an estimate for that, so I'm curious if you have any.
That's what I wanted.
Yeah, what?
How do you even predict that?
Yeah, we look at, we look at the, you know, the participation levels in the state. I think we actually estimated it a little bit low. And then we look at the total high school enrollment and by town.
So percentage based on number of kids enrollment?
Exactly.
Okay.
Is that including legacy debt?
Legacy debt is on here too, yes.
It's in our merge number.
It's in your, it's in the numbers, correct, yes.
So I just wanna make a point about VOTEC. Right now, if children in Southern Berkshire want to do, want to participate in a VOTEC education, that is potentially being offered with a merger. They have to go a long way. Deconic, I think there's even a place in Connecticut. There's a place in Springfield. And so when we say we're predicting that three students out of 100 or so may go to VOTEC based on historical averages, that's gonna change. The likelihood is the opposite. The likelihood is that once we have a full-blown VOTEC school in Southern, in the Southern Berkshire County towns, you're gonna see an increase in the number of students who wanna do it because it's right here. And it's state of the art. So the likelihood of the savings is actually much larger than for you. Because you're gonna get much more students who are gonna take advantage of VOTEC.
Especially if there are different additional tracks, I would imagine.
Right. So I would say that the estimate for savings is quite low.
Yes.
Yeah, honey, just a question about enrollment of yours. So this is Berkshire Hills, what they reported October 1st of 2022. 31 students from Monterey chose Central Berkshire Hills and 11 are in a high school.
Which 50% of them. But that's general choice, not.
Well, that's correct, but I'm just saying there are 11 high school students.
They choose back and forth because we have Carrington students too, so.
These are the most.
All right, I'll keep going.
Yeah, so let's keep going, sorry. We appreciate the back and forth.
No, it's good. I, I didn't know how the time was gonna go. I think it's been helpful to do the presentation, actually take questions as we're going through.
Do you have one question about per figures? How many of Berkshire Hills students right now come from, or the high school, come from Richmond, Sandusville, Otis, and other places? Not just, I would, I'd like to know what actually comes from Stockbridge, West Stockbridge, and Great Barrington? Those specific numbers?
Yeah.
Because why? High school?
The high school?
Because, I mean, if, we're talking eight towns, but it's not just eight towns because we have Rich and Consolidated, which has a contract with Berkshire Hills, and we have.
Farmington River.
Yeah.
There's very few.
Farmington River.
There's very few from Farmington River.
Yeah, I mean, those two districts have agreements with multiple districts where they can send kids for tuition, as you know, because they're not, they have a non-operating high school, which means they don't operate that high school.
But I'd like just to know that number.
Yeah, yeah, we have, actually, um.
Do you want? I can tell you what it is. If that's what you all want. I'm curious. So at Great Barrington, the number, this is again, October 1st, 2022. High school only. Great Barrington has 214. And the high schools, Stockbridge has 37. West Stockbridge has 38. Do you have choice, tuition bin? Do you want those breakdowns for high school?
I have the ones for our district, so.
What are you looking at?
Tuition.
Berkshire Hills. Berkshire Hills is what that's.
We're going.
Tuition, no, everybody's tuitioned in when they school.
Sorry to, I think it's not, I think it's an important.
Yeah, I just care.
Question that.
Those are the three I wanted.
The information is available. Let's try to get through the presentation and then, because I think that there are so many questions. The financial stuff is really important, the financial questions. There's so many other questions that I think people might have.
Sure.
So if we could move along with the presentation, we'll save your questions for after.
Yeah, and again, these snapshots are there for your reference. And so we have another one that's just looked at change year over year. That's a slide that's on. And then I just want to point out the slide that Lucy's been referencing, which is this idea of how the merger and no merger would play out specifically as it relates to costs for the new high school for Monterey versus costs to send students into the CBTE course program. So in this case, you know, the, you know, the cost of the, of the merger to the average home, your contribution to the new high school, you cited a figure in the 40,000 range. It's 44.3.
What, are you talking?
Yeah, for, yeah, towards the high school and then.
What's, what's, what's?
It's Mickey's question.
That's not my question.
That's Mickey's.
That is the town, town of Monterey's annual payment towards the new high school.
That would be the FY '26 payment.
Fiscal year.
Towards the new high school. And so I often get asked the question, you know, what does that mean, what does it mean in terms of taxes, right? Everyone wants to, how does that impact me? And so we did some calculations based on per thousand cost, average home, which in, in the town of Monterey is 587,000. And so for the average home of 587,000, that would be a cost of about $48 on their tax bill beyond what they pay currently.
For the building.
For the building, correct.
Not including the legacy debt that's figured into the.
But it's just the building.
Yeah, so just the building.
Yeah, my figure's only for the building. So folks wanted to know specifically what the building would cost in terms of expenses. So I, I think it was just, it's a, it was a poor underscore that, you know, I've been, I've been involved in a couple of capital projects, high school construction projects. And it is a number that people wanna know, like, hey, if we build this high school, we just built one in Central Berkshire. I wanna know what my house in Dalton, what the taxes were gonna go up, right? And so that's a, a figure that the, you know, the architects and the engineers and the accountants will figure out is, is part of that bond. So this is what we're calculating now. Obviously, we're gonna go through a process in which a high school theoretically would be designed and then costed out and then ultimately would result in an allocation. But you can see right now, based on what Lucy described earlier, this 4% operation across the four towns, five towns, it's, it's not overly significant, I guess, but I mean.
I think the comparison is important. So it's $40 as, as the share of the cost of the new high school for an average home that's assessed at 487 versus if we don't combine and you have three kids, just three kids from your town who want to go to the CBTE in Great Barrington, the cost for that same homeowner, annual cost is $90. That's what that shows, that chart.
Hey, just so, for people who are doing the math and you're saying, well, this doesn't quite add up to 26,083, right? Because I know people do that in their head, saying, well, that's about 76, 77,000. Why is it 83? It's because it's three point something. I know it sounds ridiculous, but we literally prorated out kids on a decimal. We wouldn't, we know a kid wouldn't go, 3.2 kids wouldn't go to a vote program, but that's actually how we partitioned out the costs. So Alfred was a town that we had like 0.6 of a student. Right? So it's kind of a silly cost, but it at least gives you a general idea of what three or four kids could do in terms of actual cost.
I got a point of clarification for CBTE. Just so people understand, the school district that has the programs, they don't set the rate for what it costs. Every year, the state sets the rate for tuition. And that's how it's done. And it changes every year. So just so people know, it's not the school itself. And a lot of schools also charge a capital cost because when they have students come in, they wanna make sure that they're getting some money for the use of equipment that's in the shop. So if you go on and look at Chapter 70, it breaks down everything, what it costs out. Educated elementary student, middle school, high school, special education student, CBTE student. The state says, this is what it costs. And this is what you get. And that's what you do. Just so you know, it's not the school itself. It sets the rate.
So, so just jumping into the balance of the questions, we answered a lot of questions, I think, already. I won't go into these too deep, but I'll provide you the slideshow and you'll have the text of the, the answers to the question, right? So we actually put the text answer to the question in the slide so that there would be no, you know, miscommunication from us to you all on what the answers were. And so on scenarios, obviously, I mentioned earlier, we ran a lot of scenarios, a lot of modeling. We have assumptions here and certainly if expenses went up or down, there would be adjustments relative. Or all the costs included, we mentioned earlier, the answer, yes. The population shift, again, that was part of the methodology and sort of smoothing out, having the smoothing mechanism. But Matt describes it a little bit more in his narrative here. And then there were two other questions. Is there articulated process on the closing of elementary schools? If the buildings are sold, where will the money go? And I think it was, they were described as the old buildings. And so we put old buildings in quotes there. And actually, you can answer. It's probably better than I can, because you wrote that part of the agreement or you helped shape that part of the agreement, but.
Yeah. So if, if the old buildings we're talking about are the buildings owned by the town, the building in Egremont and in Marlborough, if the school was closed, the, the.
The reverse.
The owner of that building, the landlord of town, would get that school.
The building.
The building. And if they sell it, they get to keep all the money, just like any landlord, right? Any landlord. If a tenant leaves the building, the landlord is left with the building and can do within what that landlord wants. If that's the old buildings you're talking about. If, if the old building that is being referenced here is a building owned by the district.
Like Mount Everett.
Like Mount Everett. The way the agreement reads is that if the district is permitted to sell the property, and right now, we need to get special legislation to allow that, assuming you get special legislation to allow that, then the proceeds from the sale would be returned pro rata to the member towns who contributed to the cost of improvements. So if Mount Everett were, were sold one day, I think it's highly unlikely, but if that happened, then the proceeds of that sale would be distributed to the five towns pro rata, according to the percentage that they invested in that school. So that's how it works.
I do have one question that, that this sort of raised, that first question raised to me. We're talking about a merger of the high schools. We'd have, it would be, or is it, it's actually a merger of all, so it's one district, lower school, elementary, and so it, never mind. So now I have the answer to that question, okay. It would be a joint high school with the elementary staying in situ, but it's still one district, entire K-12 or pre-K-12.
And we use this word merger as sort of a shorthand, but as John has pointed out, it's not exactly accurate. What we're doing here is we're creating a new district. We're creating a grand new district. And the existing districts go away, they evolve. So it's really the creation of a new district, a single new district. Physically, the high schools are combining into one building, whereas the elementary and middle schools are not. But we are creating a combined district.
So the last question asked was part of the core question set, and we did respond to some questions that were asked in the Monterey News. Was what year and cost of building calculated on, obviously. I have a, we have a memo online in which we explain how we derived the 100 million cost for the building. And then the loan, the, the loan payment was projected to start FY '20, '26, which may or may not be the start date depending on construction schedules if, if all this were to happen. But we also get asked the question, well, you, you guys are delusional. It's not. It's 150 or three and a quarter. It's not three and a quarter. It's 5%. And so, you know, we, we have, Matt, since the eight town, has run a whole nother spreadsheet, a schedule, to sort of explain that. But just for illustration, tonight, we did a 50% increase in debt service overall. And the change to Monterey was from 44,000 to 66,000, would be your FY '26 payment. It would be 44, it would be 66. That's if debt service went up by 50%. So that would result in an average increase per thousand, I guess, well, actually, with the average of, of $71 versus the 47 that we cited earlier. So, you know, it's still a relatively low cost because the burden is really gonna be borne in the three Berkshire Hills towns. I got a, a talk with Wes Stockbridge in a couple of weeks and that's a, you know, they, it's, it's a heavier hit to them, for sure, based on the way that this model works.
And that's true whether we merge or not.
That's correct. It's true whether we merge or not.
And what Lucy said before, when the new district gets created, the old ones dissolve. What's the timetable for that?
Probably not until July 1, 2026. So there's a, a very important debt approval contingency that's built into the regional agreement. So because we don't know now and can't know now exactly what the cost of the new high school is going to be, that's not gonna be known until 2024. And because they're just now getting ready to hire an architect, building, to get design, all of that. So there won't be able to be a vote on whether to approve the debt necessary to construct the high school until 2024. And so what we built into the agreement is something I call an unwind. And so what we built into the agreement is something I call an unwind contingency, because the way we get real savings here is by not just creating a new district where we can have some economies to scale, you know, at the superintendent level and other high levels, but by combining the high schools. I mean, that's really the value proposition, both on the educational side and the financial side. And so if the new high school doesn't get built for eight towns, this creation of the new district doesn't really make a lot of sense. And so I wanted to make sure that we had in the agreement something that allows Berkshire Hills to go its own way if the vote on the debt for the new high school fails. And so we have a debt approval contingency built into the agreement, which says, if the vote fails on the debt for the new high school, whatever cost it is, 100 million, 120 million, 130 million, whatever that number is, if it fails, then this whole goes away. The combined district, the new district dissolves, and the existing districts continue as they are. That's the debt approval contingency. And that vote will likely happen mid to late 2024. If it's approved, then the operational date for the new district would likely be July 1, 2026. The reason I say likely is that the laws that currently exist doesn't allow a transition period of that length, it's two and a half years for a transition period. The maximum time currently allowed under the law would be up until July 1, 2025, but we are going to present special legislation, and this was with the encouragement of Desi, that would allow the transition period to extend that extra year. So assuming that special legislation gets passed, the operational date for the new school is July 1, 2026.
More.
Thank you. What, I'm coming to the conversation later than most people in this room, but why are the elementary and middle school educational facilities off limits? Is that a political hot potato you just didn't want to tackle? Because there could be additional savings, and I'm thinking about the new Marlborough school, which just came up as an incentive, that facility's got to be at least 1,500 years old. And, you know, eventually, people are going to say, let's replace that facility.
No.
No?
No, it's town-owned.
Okay.
So Marlborough owns it, so it wouldn't cost.
But the school district might not want to send kids there anymore. It might be so outdated that they have to get the kids into a new facility.
So under the current Southern Berkshire Regional School District Agreement, a decision could be made by the school committee to close one of those schools, Egremont or Marlborough. And there is a process in the existing agreement for closing a school. It requires a supermajority at the school committee level, and then four out of the five towns have to vote in favor. So let's choose Marlborough, right? If there was a supermajority without merger, right, if there were a supermajority of the current school committee in favor of that, and four of the five towns voted in favor, that school could be closed now.
Okay.
Right? Under the regional agreement that we're proposing for the new district, we have a very robust process that needs to be followed before any school could be closed, but a school could be closed, just as it can be now in either Southern Berkshire or Berkshire Hills. Now, under the proposed agreement, again, you have to have not only a supermajority of the school committee voting in favor, but in that vote, there needs to be residents from at least six of the eight towns voting in favor on the school committee. So that's an additional requirement that doesn't exist currently in either district. And then it goes to the towns, and six out of the eight towns, again, the supermajority of the towns, would have to vote in favor of closure. As to why the proposed model, the recommended model, doesn't include closure of any of those schools, it's not just that it's a political hot potato, but of course it is.
Yes.
But it's not just because of that, there's an educational reason why that was not part of the research team's recommendation, and Jay, you can speak to that.
No, I think for sure, we felt that, you know, there's certainly an argument for having, you know, kids close to home in their community, the younger kids. We even discussed, you know, middle school students in Mount Everett, you know, moving into, onto the Great Barrington campus, and I think, at the end of the day, we really felt there was strength in keeping the younger students closer to their home base, understanding that, you know, when, if this becomes an eight-town district, that kids actually may, their home base may become a different school, because it then becomes the school which is geographically closest to their home. So in some cases, as you know, in the five towns, you have elementary kids on bus rides for pretty long distances to get to the elementary school, which is probably why you see some of the choice patterns you see right now with the migration into Berkshire Hills and probably vice versa on some level. But I think ultimately, at the end of the day, certainly, politics weighed in, but equally so was the, was the argument around, you know, just keeping students in the smaller elementary schools closer to home. I could, Rob.
What's happening? I was thinking, are the rest of your questions questions from the Monterey News?
I just, there was an enrollment question that came up, I thought might be important to share, and then I can just give you the slide deck for the other questions.
Well, I was thinking, since you have those written down, we can share that, share and post it on our website, but maybe it makes sense now to just go through, like we've already kind of been doing, but just what the people here have questions about, and then whether they, if they overlap, we can look through that. So I, but we'll post it on our website.
Yeah, but there was an enrollment question asked, and I promise that we'll get to the slide, I'll show that.
Okay. Yeah, you want to show the enrollment slide, and then we'll just go to Jenson, and Roger, you'll be first.
So then, sorry, the question asked, what percentage of students choice the Berkshire Hills, Monterey kids go to Berkshire Hills? And so I just, we did two graphs just so people could see it. This is data which was extracted from reports, but it's the Southern Berkshire enrollment K through 12, and then just the high school enrollment projected 1994 to 2024. So this is as of last week, school committee, I wouldn't take the red numbers, they're not, they're not confirmed until October 1st, I just want to be clear that those numbers are just based on what was reported at the last school committee. But we just wanted to show the, you know, the trend in enrollment, both, you know, K-12 but also in just the high school. These are the choice trends, real quickly. Blue is kids who choice in, red is kids that choice out. So Berkshire Hills has a large number, as was pointed out, of students who come, who arrive via choice and tuition, and a smaller number that exit the three towns for other districts. And then that's an inverse relationship, which, what happens in Berkshire Hills, which is they do receive students, but they send more students out.
And the choice is literally choosing to go to another public school and not just not attending, choosing to private school?
Yeah, I believe so.
I'm just curious what it would be called.
Yeah, I believe so.
On our sheets, it shows us that when the kids choice out, it's not only to Mont, it's to Lee, it's to Alderweireld, it's to all the schools.
Was it all public schools or does it?
No, some are private schools, some are homes, I mean, we have a whole data chart.
The data exists, I just was asking what was on the data, yeah.
All right, so this is, this is just, these are just numbers. Now, I want to be clear that this is not every child that resides in Monterey, because you do have some students who are homeschooled, you do have some students, as Tim pointed out, who choice to other districts, you have some kids who go to private schools, right? But your foundation enrollment is around, right, I think for this year is around 83, but these are the kids who live in Monterey and attend either Southern Berkshire or Berkshire Hills in these four selected years. Okay? So it's, and I just did a percentage of the total amount of that, with those two numbers added as the denominator, so you get a sense of what the pattern was, whether there was a trend up or down. And then I did a snapshot of 2021, 25 kids who chose to attend either Berkshire Hills or Southern Berkshire, it's about a 50/50 split. So when we estimate three kids going to vocational ed, that's where that would be derived from. Okay? So those are the numbers, I don't, you know, what they mean to y'all is really up to you to interpret. All right, and so the other questions are here, Justin, so these are the other three questions asked, that were posed in the Monterey News, I want to make sure that folks knew that we do our best to try to answer every question that comes our way, and so I'll share the slideshow with you, and we can go to general questions.
Yeah, we'll post the slideshow on our website, because obviously, the viewing capabilities today were unlimited. Roger McDonald.
Just a quick question about the, because you were talking about voting before, but with the current elections, or the current votes that are coming up, are there, it's an all or nothing for both of them? So it's an all or nothing for the first vote, and it's an all or nothing for the capital vote as well? So if Alfred decides to not vote for the capital, they voted, they voted to move forward, but then they didn't like the capital, and that town says no, the project's done?
It's a really good question. I can answer it definitively for the first vote, and I can't answer it definitively for the second vote, because it depends upon which of the statutory methods are chosen for that second vote. So there are two ways you can get debt approved, debt approved, under the law. One is to do a town-by-town vote, and the other is to do a majority of all of the voters in the district. Okay? So on the first one, to yes, to get an eight-town, create a new eight-town district, you need a majority in each of the eight towns voting yes. Absolutely.
So if any town voted it down, it wouldn't happen? Or they wouldn't be part of it?
No, no, there would be no eight-town district. Now, whether people, not I, would have the appetite to do this all over again with six towns or seven towns, I don't know. It's possible. But what we're hoping for, and what we're, what we have, will have before the voters in October, is an eight-town district, right? And in order for there to be an eight-town district, the majority in each of the eight towns has to vote yes.
At-town meeting.
At-town meeting.
And then how does the vote, how is the vote conducted at town meeting?
According to the statute, it needs to be a written ballot, and a question that has been asked of me, to which I don't yet have an answer, and we're going to run this down with our council, maybe town council, in each of the eight towns, is whether the clicker vote constitutes a written ballot. Of course, when the statute was written, there was no such thing as clicker vote, so, you know, that's, that's sort of a tough.
Our town council has already weighed in, and she said that the clicker does not count, and that we would need to do the paper written ballot.
I'm not surprised.
That's what our town council has said.
I'm not surprised, but, you know, we've got maybe five or six town councils, so we might get five or six different councils.
So the follow-up, can I just, I want to get the follow-up to that, so let's assume that first vote, all eight towns say yes.
Yes.
Then in the second, second one, there's two scenarios.
Yes.
One where it has to be majority of everybody, but if it were the other scenario where it's town-by-town, would it again have to be all eight, or is it just a supermajority that are now, because the district's been created and now we're approving the debt? Do you know what that scenario is? Do all eight have to do it, again?
I believe the answer to that is yes.
I think so.
Yeah.
Roger.
And do we know, sorry, but just to finish that, do we know which method that we're using? Are we using majority of all of the voters, or are we using the town?
Yeah. So the way the regional agreement is written, the default is for approval of any debt, the default is majority of everyone in the district, but the school committee can decide to use the other methodology if there's a vote by two-thirds of the members of the school committee to use the other methodology. That's why I can't give you a definite decision today, because I don't know which way the school committee would go.
It's money, so it's complicated.
So the school committee at the time, the newly formed school committee?
Yes.
Would, the default would be that it's a majority of all of the voters?
Correct.
But they could override that with a two-thirds vote of the school committee to make it each town?
Correct.
Okay.
That's good.
Just a follow-up, because at the other meeting, they were talking about Great Barrington, because I know we're sort of piggybacking on Great Barrington, moving in a direction for getting a new school, and that, do we know what, where they are at that? Because they were like, they didn't really, they're, I don't want to say they were sketchy, but they didn't want to say yes or no, because they're in a, they're in a, they're talking about it right now, where they were actually, Great Barrington itself, I guess, wants to fund the new school, or update the old school, or expand the old school. So do we know where that is? And is that the vote that they're going to take if they're special, if they're, are they doing two, are they doing two town meetings? Are they going to do one where they vote on one, or one where they, so it's, no?
Not in October, right? There's just one special town meeting in October, and it's not on that issue.
Right.
All right? It's not on that issue. It's on whether they want to agree to join a new district of eight towns. They are, and when we say Great Barrington, it's really Berkshire Hills, it's the three towns. But they are in the process of working through with the MSVA, right? Whether it's going to be a renovation of the existing school, whether there's going to be a completely new structure built, or something else. And so they're not able to tell you today how that's all going to get resolved. But the question I think you're asking, which is a good one, is when we get to the debt approval vote, right, in 2024, they're going forward with this new high school, they at least hope they're going through with this new high school with us or without us, right? So what they're going to do is they're going to have two votes at that point. So there's going to be a vote whether to approve, assuming, assuming the vote is favorable and we create this new district. Okay, that's a big assumption, but assuming there's that vote, and we've created this new district, and we've got our transition committee going, and they're working on and developing a design for an eight-town high school, when we get to the vote on whether to approve the debt, those three towns in Berkshire Hills are going to have two votes. They're going to vote to, on whether to approve the debt for the construction of an eight-town high school, and they're also, at the same time, in case that vote fails, they're going to have a vote on whether to approve the construction of a three-town high school, because they don't want, and we didn't want, as a planning board, to do anything to jeopardize their ability to move forward with their new high school, whether we create a new eight-town district or not. So yes, two votes, but then, not now.
Thank you, Jerry.
So, I think I'm not bad, straight. When we get to the second vote, the vote of the town of Great Barrington alone can make that debt, make whatever we vote negligible, because.
No, no.
Because if, it amounts, you said it counts on the votes, the number of votes for all eight towns, not for the town voting, not a town voting it down, it's the number of people, and they certainly have more people than anybody else.
If we go to the, if we go to the individual people voting, not the town. If we go to the, if we go to the individual people voting, not the town.
No, you said it would be the individual people.
So you're, so.
Mickey, you're right, I'm sorry, I said no.
Well, is it eight towns voting on that bond? Or is it going to be our five towns only voting on that bond, whether we stay within the district or not in the district? Because if you go to the people and eight towns are voting, then more people live in Great Barrington than they do in Monterey. And that's what I think your question is.
As I understand it, the board that would be making that call is comprised of, and correct me if I'm wrong here, 11 members. But, the Southern Berkshire districts actually have a majority of those members.
Correct.
Six out of the 11.
Six out of the 11, which I think matters when it comes down now. That, I'm not saying how that vote would go, and I'm just saying that having a majority of those members still matters.
So that'll go to the two-thirds, something, or not being, or being a town vote?
Why is Great Barrington being able to, if that goes that route, being able to vote on the five towns, whether we stay merged or not? Because if they accept the ba, I think is what she's saying. If Great Barrington accepts the bond, and they have a whole bunch of voters, and we don't accept the bond, we're not gonna count because Great Barrington. Is it our five towns only to vote to unmerge because we don't accept the bond? Our towns, not Great Barrington, not West Stockridge, not Stockridge. Our five towns.
I think it's been explained clearly by Lucy, which is that the default for voting on bonds in the new district is the total number of voters in all of the eight towns.
So that's.
So, it would be maybe 2,000, 3,000 voters vote, I don't know. Usually in Monterey, we get a few hundred.
But what she's saying is a majority can happen from.
But that's clear to everyone, right? That's the default way to vote on bonds in the new district? If a supermajority of the school committee votes, they can override that, and the debt vote would be town by town?
Correct.
Um, that's interesting.
But I also want to point out that the Barrington voters tanked it every time in the past.
Yeah, I'm just pointing out that.
Yeah, but the story's falling in.
But the school was going to fall in, and they all, and they still tanked it. Right, I'm just saying. That's fascinating.
Dennis Lynch.
Good evening.
Hi.
I have two, I'm calling considerations, getting into the weeds much beyond whether or not to go a merger. If the merger does happen, these come into play. And I'm just interested to find out if they were considered in the numbers that were generated. One of which is, if the old high school is in fact demolished and replaced, and all that equipment, whether it be tables, chairs, all the way down to whatever, paper clips, is there an inventory of that? And what would be the considered impact on the budget of either reuse or disposal of all that equipment? That's one consideration. And the other one would be more of a question related to the health of the students on the transportation side. I'm assuming that most of the school buses are in fact diesel-fueled. If those diesel-fueled vehicles were replaced by electric vehicles, which are going to be healthier for students to ride on, what the financial impact would be? Considering that there is funding out there, though, at the federal and state level, to offset the cost of going into a phased program to change the entire type of vehicles. I was looking at the summary of the study, and it mentioned going to smaller vehicles and tier-two approach of all, you know, separating out the older students from the younger students, which is great. It just comes down to the buses used in those vehicles. Just wondering if they were considered and what the impact would be.
Yeah, I don't think that Rich in his study, The Break, got specifically into transitioning the equipment into green technologies. Obviously, there's incentives at the state level, and all the school districts will be looking at that. I mean, currently, the districts don't own their bus fleet. They have to contract out.
To the same company.
Right, to the same, same company, I guess.
Sure.
And there will have to be incentives, I think, for those carriers to also transition their fleets. You know, the good news right now, the rurals get a decent amount of reimbursement for transportation. Peter Dillanoff says to me, you know, transportation's not a cost driver for us because we get such decent reimbursement. That hasn't always been the case. There's been an ebb and flow in terms of the state's commitment to meet that. But in recent years, it's been pretty robust. But you're asking a big question, which is a pretty significant investment at some point, and also the technologies that follow. So, certainly. And on the building side, we were asked a question around, you know, you know, the MSVA and, you know, how can you justify that in terms of environmental impact and things of that sort? The MSVA has a green schools program, which is really part of the core work now. They have model designs and expectations. They also have incentives for incorporating that, you know, into your design. Actually, on the slideshow, I put a link on the second question to their program. I'm gonna read a little bit more about it, but that would be an expectation I would hope for.
Sure.
It would be part of the construction. Probably the best answer I can give you right now.
Yeah, I would think the idea of transitioning to fuel-efficient vehicles, healthier vehicles, let's call it, would more hit the operating and capital budgets.
Sure.
And as you point out, it could be significant if you go to the whole fleet all at one time, or you phase it over a period of time.
Yeah, I mean, well, the only fleet stolen in Berkshire County is the Pittsfield fleet. And when I was the superintendent in Pittsfield, we bought a new fleet. We transitioned it, so, and they'll be in that same position again and have to have probably pretty significant incentive to transition that over to green technology. So, point well taken. I think the state's paying, seems to be investing some real money in that.
And those companies that provide the vehicles through contract, they would have to be incentivized in some way.
That's okay, sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
I just wanted to answer the question you asked about the equipment, all the way down. When the Congress did the new bill, MSVA really looks at the equipment and says, you know, it's safe and stuff. So they moved a lot of their stuff that they had from the old building into the new building. I mean, they had to get new stuff, obviously, because some of the stuff is so old. That's part of what the MSVA does, is, you know, if you can, if it's good enough and it's safe, you know, if it's gonna save you, you don't have to purchase anything, you know, so. So that's something that they're part of, making sure that they're trying to, trying to save everybody a dollar.
Do you have another question?
Well, I just wanted to underline, when Lucy was saying about Berkshire Hills towns voting, having two options of the budget for the new high school. That second, you know, the first one is for a building that's gonna house eight towns. The second one is for a building that will house three towns. So, if the Berkshire Hills towns vote, I mean, if it fails in the, you know, in the eight-town level, and Berkshire Hills goes forward, it's a new, it's a construction for a three-town building. And they're doing two proposals, so I just wanted to be clear. That that will not, the second proposal is gonna be limited to, was it 425?
485 versus 20, yeah. So if we form a new district, the MSVA has said, they're gonna pay for close to 55% of a building for 620 kids. If they go alone, without us, they'll pay 55% of a building for 485.
Actually, they won't get that incentive.
Oh, they won't get the incentive, correct. They'll pay 48%, thank you for describing. They'll pay 48% of a building for 485 kids, so. The, how many kids were there in Monterey in 2021?
Well, there were 25 kids. 25 total high school kids who were in either Berkshire Hills or Berkshire.
How many chose into Berkshire Hills?
I think it was 12.
So, the point there is, there's gonna be less space at Berkshire Hills if we don't combine. For those kids from Monterey, who for whatever reason, distance, wanting to be in a larger school, whatever the reason is, now have the ability to choice in. They may not have that ability if we don't combine. And that's something to think about, because, you know, it's about choice. It's about parental choice and student choice. And there's so much more opportunity for choice if we combine and form this new eight-town district.
Well, thank you for joining us. Sorry about the technical difficulties.
No, no, I think we handled it. We got.
We had to have your help.
Just a real quick close would be, we have a lot of other community events we're gonna be doing, so we really encourage people to continue to come out. I know we have, the Berkshire Eagle is hosting a forum on October 4th. I got the theory. The Mahewee. And then, on the 11th and 18th, we're gonna have events at Southern Berkshire and at Berkshire Hills Community Camp. I know other boards are inviting us, and everyone is welcome to attend those. So, we're, and please, I'm spending a lot of my days right now responding to questions and answering questions, that's okay. So, if you have questions, send them our way.
Can people email you, where should people ask questions?
Well, they can do it on the website. Usually, once they ask a question on the website, I just email from my account, and like, just email me directly, you know, it'd be quicker, you know?
So, where, should they submit it on the website, or should they email you directly?
Right in the front page, there's a little form there, okay, it's easy, yeah.
And that's eighttownrsdpb?
No, it's eighttown.org.
Eighttown.org.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Eighttowns.org, yes. And I think that, the link will also be on the town website. I think it already, it's.
Really appreciate you giving us all this time.
Thanks for answering so directly. Thanks for answering as many questions.
Yeah, and the interactive work, that's what we're over.
One more, one more thing. If you're interested in October 4th at the Mahewee, you have to register. So you just contacted the Mahewee, it's free. But if you don't register, you're probably not gonna get it, because I'm guessing it's gonna be sold out.
So, make a motion to adjourn this meeting of the Monterey Select Board.
Second, it will vote on that one?
Yes.
And yes, so the meeting of the select board is adjourned at 8:25, yeah?